At the same place. Yeah. And we certainly want to welcome you to everyone here. I would like to ask you to, um, stop on this place. Um, but as I often say, they have like, mind of their own if it rings, if you just go outside and come back in and answer it. Um, come back in and sit down after that. Uh, I'm sorry. I was trying to think about who to say that. And the mission and pledge of Commissioner Deal is out. So, uh, I was reminded about two meetings ago, that a young man was a preacher that I had forgotten about. So, Brother Lawson Deal, would you come up to Lawson's sack? Would you come up and, um, I did it together, we were in Lawson's sack, and would you come up and lead us in the invitation and pledge allegiance? If you will.
Absolutely. All right, if you'll join me in prayer. Our Lord Jesus, we come to you this evening, recognizing who you are and what you have done for this county, for the state, for this nation. And Lord, we ask a great blessing upon the elected officials and those working in government. Lord, we ask that your hand will be upon them and their families. Lord, as we go forward as a county, Lord, we pray and seek your wisdom and your guidance and everything that we say and that we do. Lord, that we will do things with a loving heart and out of kindness for our brothers and sisters. Lord, we lift up those in law enforcement, public safety, Lord, for everything that they have done and continue to do. Lord, as a sacrifice of their time and their resources to serve the people of this community. Lord, I'm personally thankful for all those that attended my mother recently after a meeting, and just so thankful that so many people are there to care for her. And Lord, as we go into this meeting here tonight, we just ask that your Spirit will be here among us to lead and guide in everything that is said and done. Lord, that we can just have a sense of peace, Lord, as we discuss these important matters. And Lord, that we'll just continue to seek you in everything that we say and do. We ask all this in your name. Amen?
Amen.
If you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for doing that. Um, tonight, this is a very, very important meeting, and I'm calling it the chairman's announcement, and I want to read this rather than doing it by memory, because there's many, many facts in what I'm fixing to read to you that is very, very important. And, um, some of it is instructions and things like that. So, before we begin, I have the following announcement. The sole purpose of this meeting is to hold a public hearing on the tentative fiscal year 2025 general appropriations budget for Bullock County. Other issues that you may have can be addressed next Tuesday, June the 4th, at 5:30 PM at our regular meeting. So if you're wanting to discuss anything else other than budget, the budget hearing, then you'll need to come back next Tuesday, June the 4th. On May the 7th, a public notice was duly advertised concerning this hearing in the legal organ and sent to the other media. The tentative budget provides preliminary framework for forecasting revenues and expenditures and considers priorities established by the Board of Commissioners after receiving input from county departments and agencies. Before adopting a final budget, it is customary to receive public input and comment through this forum scheduled here tonight. This public hearing allows those who have examined the budget, that was made available online and by other means, a chance to make comments or ask questions. There will be a brief and broad overview of the fiscal year 2025 budget before the floor opens for public comments. We anticipate that there may be some questions tendered by some of you that may require a follow-up response to you in the coming days. However, we will try to answer questions where information is easy to convey or accessed within the five minutes allotted to each individual who has signed up to speak. We will give those who signed up five minutes to speak after the county commissioner makes his, the county manager makes his presentation. And we certainly want to thank you once again for your participation and engagement. And now, um, gonna ask Mr. Venus White, while Tom is getting ready to call the roll, please.
I, Venus Bency White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman Roy Thompson, Vice Chairman Kurt Deal, Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Jappy Stringer.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
Commissioner Toby Connor.
Aye.
I've determined that we have six members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct the business of, for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. And now, you're the floor to our county manager, Tom Couch.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Commissioners and staff and the audience we have with us. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the tentative budget and where we're at. I think the chairman has adequately explained the purpose of the public hearing. So, we have scheduled on June 18th, adoption of the budget. We have previously had other meetings and workshops. So, I think what this really culminates into is giving the audience or the citizens a chance to participate this evening. The budget review team, which consists normally and primarily of myself, the CFO, the Assistant County Manager, but also the HR Director, other financial staff, including our Purchasing Manager, we put this team together to try to make formative estimates and forecasts about revenues and expenditures. And as you know, we all, we have a tool available to us that helps us work with that, especially with what economists call elastic revenues that are dependent on economic circumstances and conditions. You know, we have an economic index and model that we use, and currently, the, uh, the economy in Bullock County is very robust, but there are still yet some headwinds with inflation and the hope that the feds will improve fiscal policy, which would be good for us, because if in the event there's a need to borrow, the county can do so at the lowest possible rate. Now, again, you've had one retreat, a day and a half retreat that was held at Georgia Southern, two workshops as well since then, spanning from March to May. And the budget team, meanwhile, through all of this, has been reconciling and trying to true up budget data to account for late fiscal year adjustments or any other adjustments that are needed in a work plan, because really, when you look at a budget, it's more than a financial and a communication tool, it's, it's an annual work plan. And we try to gauge all of our activities and all of our initiatives and goals and tie them, or rather, not tie them, in a way, tie them, but put a price tag on them. So, the tentative budget was made public a week ago, on May 23rd, on our website, and to the media, printed copies, as required by state law, were made available here at the Commissioner's Office. A few copies of the budget were emailed upon request, and we're not aware of anyone physically visiting the Commissioner's Office to see or request a printed copy. During our reconciliation period, the budget team has found, since I think our most recent workshop earlier in the month, that it was necessary to introduce two new special revenue funds. One fund that will be introduced this year is Tax Allocation District Number One, and that's for the tax allocation district, the 1,800 acre area located at I-16 and 301. We all know that the TAD isn't a new concept, but now that development has begun to occur, revenues are now being realized after many years of underdevelopment. And then the second fund is also the opioid settlement funds. The seven of you have probably not, nor would you or anybody else want to be privy to trying to read these six or seven settlement agreements with Big Pharma. But nonetheless, it's taken us about a year and a half to kind of sift through them and understand how it operates, and then some agreements are going to provide funding for six years, other agreements are going to provide funding for 18 years. It's very, very confusing, but because of the agreement, we have, um, we have obligations to expend the funding over time for good, good purposes, to eliminate or mitigate the opioid epidemic that some would argue is still happening. And with this, this particular fund, I think for the first year, we're gonna have about 200, maybe a quarter of a million dollars available, and we've recommended devoting 60% to internal county agencies, such as the Sheriff's Department, the Accountability of Drug Court, and EMS. EMS actually uses a, sadly, a lot of Narcan, but there's purposes in all three of those departments or functions where we can put opioid to, or opioid mitigation funds to good use. And then we'll make the rest open to community agencies who deal with clients that have opioid addictions, and so long as they follow the terms and conditions of the larger opioid agreements, we'll give them a competitive opportunity to put in proposals and award them essentially with a form of local grant money. Our overall balanced budget is 100, now stands today for FY '25 at $156 million. With $65 million nestled in the general fund, the budget plan maintains our good financial position and meets your strategic initiatives and addresses mostly the following major fiscal warrants. You know, we went into some detail during the budget workshop, but I think when you look at the bigger picture, even if it's from 30,000 feet and you bring it, bring it down to five feet, these three categories, maybe two nestled together, are the major fiscal warrants. First, the budget review team maintained your commitment and priorities to enhancing public safety. 22.5 positions overall are gonna be, additional positions will be allocated to the general fund, with 16 of those being in public safety, five at EMS, and 11 at the Sheriff's Department. And upon your initiative, we're also going, and upon the fire department's request, we're also gonna place 12 additional positions for firefighters in the rural fire fund. And in order to enhance recruitment and retention and be labor market competitive, we've recommended, based on market factors, an across-the-board cost of living increase of 3%, which would come into effect on July 1st, after you adopt the budget, and merit increase opportunities of 2%, all for qualified employees. And then, on the capital side of things, we're, we're really just activating everything we've been doing in our longer-term capital improvements plan, which we update to make it a budget year from the second year out, and maybe make some adjustments in the out years. But fortunately, thanks to robust, robust sales tax collections, it allows us to meet all of our current CIP obligations, maybe current for at least the next couple of fiscal years. We're still dealing with some inflation and some rather high-ticket items, fire trucks, ambulances, anything that's rolling stock. It seems that construction pricing is easing, but it's not falling back, but the fact that it's stabilizing, I think is the beginning of a good thing. A general ad valorem tax rate of, will not be recommended tonight, it's a little premature and it's a little early. However, the team is willing to report that, that we're confident that we can project perhaps a range that will be neutral or favorable to the county property taxpayers once the appeals are complete. Board of Assessors is still going through an appeals process, and in all likelihood, there's going to be adjustments made for, made through that process. So, once it's done, probably after the budget passes, but we feel we have enough statistical tolerance within, within the range, the projected ranges that we're looking at. But to speak today, based on the latest that the Board of Tax Assessors has given us, our neutral rate would stand at 11.444 mils, dropping from 12.85 mils. But again, we have to wait for the appeals to conclude and when the digest is complete, and then we can begin to zero in and look at other alternatives for you to decide upon. So, we know it's going down, we'd like to make it neutral or favorable. You know, there's a concept in public sector economics called, you know, revenue, revenue neutral tax rates. While we've achieved that with that 11.444%, we would like to make it a little more attractive, and we, we want to make, and when you look at a revenue neutral rate, you have to keep in mind, economically or in economic theory, it applies to the whole jurisdiction, and it doesn't apply to individual properties. If you, if you have property that has, has been improved upon or expanded, not talking about assessment values or resales or anything like that, you know, that, that's kind of the nexus of the, of the neutral rate. If you go up, it's because you've improved your property in most cases, and that's where we want to be, or because the digest has actually added growth from new construction or other tax resources. You know, we want, we want to push the inflation part out of it. So, a couple more things, I think it's essential to note that as far as fire tax rates, we're recommending that they remain the same in the rural district and the Statesboro Fire District, and especially in, in the rural district, the millage, the existing millage rate is crucial to meet the level of service that you all prioritize to help keep the ISO ratings low there. We are adding firefighters, are proposing to add firefighters, and as you know, we're also, at the same time, attempting to upgrade or add fire stations and improve our rolling stock, which we've been very aggressive over the last five or six years, but we, we still, we still have some rolling stock that's in serious need of replacement, if nothing else, for the safety of the firefighters and the safety of the community when fires occur. And pending tonight's hearing, we're prepared to consider your final suggestions as we prepare for adoption on June the 18th. And at the behest of Senator Hickman, I, I've been asked to just have a reveal or a conversation with you about one topic, and I won't get into, I can't remember off my head the exact number of the bills that were passed in the Georgia General Assembly, but they, they kind of fuse together this concept of what, what I'm going to tell you about. You might remember approximately a year ago, or not quite a year ago, we, we were having conversations with our legislative delegation and other people throughout the state concerning the opportunity to extend sales taxes, and in particular, maybe to be able to legislate the potential for the voters to have a referendum on, on a ninth penny. But that ninth penny, like the school board lost, would be the opportunity for the county to, and the cities really, to roll back its property tax rates, premised on an intergovernmental agree, agreement being created. Now, there's sort of a trigger to it. It's tied to something else that the legislature, the General Assembly did, and I won't get in the weeds with it, because I only understand about 90% of it myself, but in November, there will be a constitutional amendment on the ballot for what they call a floating homestead exemption. So, I, I think the idea behind this floating homestead exemption is to create the opportunity statewide to stabilize the assessments of, from these, you know, rather large assessments, and tie the assessment increases on an annual basis to maybe the Consumer Price Index or, or general inflation. There is an opt-out for, for cities and counties to do that, but ultimately, if this constitutional amendment is not passed, then the opportunity to have a referendum on a sales tax will, will be, I don't know if expired is the right word, trumped, a bad word right now, but, you know what I mean. It's, it's just, you wouldn't be able, you wouldn't be able to go through with it. So, I, I just, on Senator Hickman's behalf, wanted to mention that at his request, but we'd have to evaluate how good of a thing it would be for Bullock County. I, I think it would be if the voters were, were willing to add a penny, but, and I think, I think it would be quite possible, you know, to calculate break-even points for most property tax owners, because IRS has a tool that can help you when you're putting your taxes together to tell you, based on your household income and such things, how much sales tax you pay. Some people buy more things than others, but it is a pretty good index, and you can use that as a baseline along with, along with data available on the Tax Assessors webpage to figure out whether it's a greater benefit or not, because the one thing we have to remember economically is that sales taxes are regressive on lower-income individuals and households. So, you know, we, we've got to keep that in mind when you're looking at effective tax policy. But anyway, I didn't want to get too far away from my presentation on the, on the budget to y'all. Again, we've targeted June 18th for adoption, you're going to consider public comment tonight, but before I leave the podium, do you Commissioners have any questions about the information I provided or where, where we've come thus far? All right, well, should they occur, I'll be glad to try to answer them later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I will now ask for a motion to open the floor for public comments. We have a motion, we have a second. The floor is now open for public comments, but before we call first, we have how many signed up?
Six.
We have six people signed up. I remind you that as always, we have five minutes per person. We may answer any questions after you complete your five minutes. We may wait to the end and answer them all collectively if, if, however it goes. So if you will call your, now, this is about taxes. It's about anything pertaining to do with the budget. It is not about schools. We have nothing to do with schools. I do want to remind you about that. School taxes is not here. They're having a meeting in another place tonight. And so if you'll call first.
Ted Redman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ted Redman. I reviewed the budget the other day and I just had a, I was a little unclear in a couple of sections, so I was just wondering if I could have, ask a couple of questions to help clear things up. For those of you that have the budget, if you go to slide seven, that's the general revenue fund. Look all the way over on the right. It says 2024, 2025 proposed budget. And then at the bottom, there's 62 million and some change. Are those numbers, are those estimates?
Yes, they're estimates.
Okay. Okay. Cause my, my thought was, is this money that we already have?
No, no.
This year, the following next year.
That's, that's estimated revenues for next year.
Okay. So they're, so they're estimates for next year. Okay. If you, same chart, if you go all the way over to the left, 2021, 22 final budget, look at the bottom, $46 million. Is that an estimate? Or is that actual numbers that we took in?
Um, it's kind of a combination because it, by law, we have to have an approved expenditure budget. But if we bring in more revenues than what we estimated, we don't have to amend the budget for that.
Okay.
So that is the final, it may, we may have amended the, the revenues at some point in the year, or that might've been the original. That was just the, the budget, but that is not the actual amount of revenue that came in.
Okay. Okay. How does one find the actual amount of revenue that came in that year?
Um, we have also on our website, on the same, the same page where you find the budget, there is a link to the ACFERS, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Reports. They have all of that information, all of the actual, those are our audited financial reports from each fiscal year.
And then.
If you have detailed questions, you can send, send us an email and we'll answer them.
Well, my recommendation is that we actually try to have those numbers on the budget because it's very hard to tell. Cause this is just a, this is just a number. And I can't tell how much we've spent, how much we've taken in, in revenue in a year and how much we spent in a year. And that's my other point is, is there a general fund expenditure chart similar to the general fund revenue chart? I couldn't find one. I may have missed it.
Um, there, yes, there are, but there, I mean, right below that, there are expenditures by type and by function.
Exactly. Uh, yes. Yeah. And, uh, yeah, that's the 64 million.
Yes.
And then it goes on to the long list of.
Departments.
Due positions and stuff and departments and their, their annual budget for 2024, 2025.
Yes.
Cause the, the crooks of the matter that I see is if we don't know how much we actually take in on a year-to-year basis and how much we actually spend out, we have no idea if we're meeting our budget or not.
Okay.
Am I, am I missing that? I mean, this is part I'm unclear about.
Well, the finance department does submit to the commissioners monthly budget reports.
Yes.
So, you know, that gives the snapshots that, that we've seen of them, that, that gives them the ability to assess what's coming in. And I think currently this year, I mean, we're not way off at all. There are, there are some revenues that came in stronger than we, we expected. And then there are some expenditures that either have, have met or are exceeding budget. And then there are those that are also, you know, falling short of the budget. There is, there, there is a, not a surplus, it was just unspent funds. So the diff, the way I try to explain it to people is that if we, if we put everything out there on a line item basis, you know, with, with all the funds we have, there's about, there's about.
I don't think it needs to be a line item basis, a simple chart, just like the one to the general revenue fund, the general fund revenue chart on a year-to-year basis and a general fund expenditures chart, just right below that. I mean, that would help us, you know, see exactly what we're spending.
I can, I can add that and it can be up there tomorrow.
I, I have no idea if we're meeting the mark on the budget or if we're running a deficit or running a surplus or, or what, based off.
I can, I can put year-to-date numbers up there.
Okay. All right. Uh, another question. So it looked like there's going to be $62 million coming in this year or coming in the next fiscal year and $64 million going out.
Yes.
What's the plan to make up that $2 million gap?
Fund reserves.
Okay. So that leads me to my other thought. So I also saw there's a line item for about $600,000 in interest income. Is that the fund reserve?
No.
On the general revenue fund, there's interest income and it looks for next year it'd be $600,000 if I remember correctly.
If that's interest income, that's, that's represented as a revenue to the general fund.
Right.
The fund reserve I'm talking, call it rainy day funds or using your savings, that, that $1.9 million or $2 million difference is, is going to come from reserves.
Okay. Cause I did see something that was, says it's going to be assigned to make up the difference, but it just didn't say anywhere where was the, the source of those funds.
Yeah, the, the, there, there's a vast difference unfortunately between public and accounting and budgeting and public entities and private entity, entities. And they, there's a lot of, in, in some cases, different kinds of jargon. And the way we, the way we have to by statute and by, by law and by budgeting and accounting standards, usually put together by, by CPAs, it, we, we can't do our books off of, what's that software?
Excel.
QuickBooks.
QuickBooks, yeah. Yeah. We, it, it just, we can't do it that way. We, it's, it's, not only is it a lot more complicated, it's just the county's finances are more vast because when you're looking at 100 and, 156 million dollar budget and you're managing.
I, I understand.
Yeah. It, it, it isn't, I, I'm merely trying to illustrate that it's, it's difficult to explain, but we're willing to try to explain it.
See if we're meeting the mark or if we're running a surplus, running a deficit. I could not tell from the information that was provided.
It, we, we think that as the fiscal year finishes out by July 30th, or I'm sorry, June 30th, we, we are likely to have some kind of surplus, but we are waiting on some, again, some late year-end adjustments. Usually about this time of year, we're just, especially on the insurance side, whether it's employee health insurance, liability insurance, workman's comp insurance, those kinds of bills and invoices come in later in the year and, and a couple of them have been very late. And we're also waiting on some information regarding our, the employee retirement plan. But we think on the original projections that we've had, will either be pretty close or, or we, we should have some kind of surplus.
Okay. Thank you. I think my five minutes were up a while ago.
Hey, Tom, you, you explain the rainy day fund, where that comes from and why we have that and why, why the state requires us to maintain that?
Yeah.
Just so it's out there.
Well, it's, it's not as much a state mandate as it is just good financial practice. The experts, public sector and even accounting experts, because they, for example, Christie's Department functions under standards that are made by both private and public accountants. And blue books, green books, you know, the drill. So, but as far as state law goes, it really only requires us to have a budget and, and an audit. But the recommended rate or, or the recommended ratio for fund reserves or rainy day funds at the close of a fiscal year, after everything's been audited, is 25%. Now, the reason you want 25% and use that as a minimum standard, because number one, you have to keep in mind that most of the general fund money comes in, you know, over $40 million out of a $65 million revenue stream, comes in, in a very compressed time of year between November and, well, hopefully December 20th, where Ms. Higgins will come to see you. But all joking aside, it's for cash flow, it's to have adequate money for emergencies. And you also want to have at least that ideal fund balance or fund reserve that, that really makes you much more credit worthy when you need credit. And traditionally, we're a very low credit county compared to our, our peers. But when we borrow, because of our ability to manage our finances and everything, we borrow at the lowest possible rates. Before things got all jacked a couple of years ago, I can remember we were getting lease purchases for equipment or for some, some other needs that were less than 1% on interest. So that, and, and then, you know, another thing to consider, consider too, let's see, I've mentioned emergencies, but I've mentioned cash flow, I mentioned creditworthiness. Ah, another factor is, is you don't want to have your fund reserves so low because property taxes and such come in so big, like a piggy through a python in a particular ti, time of year. Some cities and counties who go way too low, they have to borrow what's called a tax anticipation note. You might have to get out there in September or October and go to the bank and either get a letter of credit, but you might have to bring in five, 10 million dollars, whatever you're short, to do that tax anticipation note. And then you're paying interest as an expense on, on top of it. So the ideal ratio or the ideal fund reserve position, it isn't something that somebody made up. There were very valid and substantive reasons to do that. And I can recall during the great, great recession, or even when I first came here, and it was of no credit or circumstance to me, but our fund balances were very, very low. The recession, you may recall, was very, very damaging to us. But since about 2015, I think through good financial management by our finance department, we've been able to maintain this ideal level. And I think, I think last year, what were we, 20, we were about at the 25% ratio and we think we'll be there this year. So it's not like we waver from it one way or another. It's just like riding in, you know, the space shuttle or something, or any other space, spacecraft or aircraft with all those controls. You know, you're, you're just, you have to navigate what you do with your finances. But that's where I mentioned earlier, our financial condition is currently good.
So no, but basically what the name says it is. So we come in here and have a natural disaster or something like that. We don't have to wait on FEMA, we don't have to wait on nobody else. We got the funds to go forward.
Oh, yeah.
To help citizens. And if it comes down to borrowing, we got those funds to borrow on at a very low percentage rate. That's the purpose of keeping 25% basically for any.
Yeah. Cause even if you do get FEMA money, it's on a reimbursement basis.
Yeah, we just getting some of that back now from the last one.
Yeah. So you, you gotta push your money out there first. And actually the feds are making money on your money. So not the ideal situation, but.
I just had a few, I just had a few questions asked me about that. I just really, I wanted to really clear it up and I, I know someone's listening tonight. I just want to make sure I got a good answer for that, you know, not just a roundabout one. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Cassandra Michael.
Um, before I get started, I do think some people in the audience had a couple of questions about his presentation. If maybe you'll address those after all the public comments, just a suggestion. Well, there are many things I would like to focus on. I'm limited to five minutes, so I'll speak on Splash in the Borough, as I've done many times before. I'm a Splash season pass holder with a six-year-old who I take to Splash almost daily, and I have years of prior experience in the, in this arena, not with budgets, but with operations of an amusement park. In the budget, it states, budget does not include the line item for depreciation this year and is more representative of projected cash flow. As evidenced here, we have $625,000 worth of depreciation in 2022, 2023, 2024 and 25. It's zero. This means that this isn't a budget. This is a cash flow statement, which isn't the purpose of today, the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, as stated on your own agenda. A budget should present all associated money information without omitting or attempting to obscure the overall financial picture for the county. Depreciation should not be omitted. Therefore, this is an inaccurate accounting. You can exclude what you don't want to pay for in your pretend profit loss statement. Honestly, I don't think it was the county CPA who did this. I think someone higher up on the totem pole requested that she do this. But someone has to pay for this unaccounted, for this unaccounted for expense. If the operations of Splash can't pay for its direct or associated debt, then why are we going to saddle the taxpayers with this? Where is this depreciation accounted for? Like I said before, this isn't a budget, this is a cash flow statement. We know that the taxpayers are on the hook for these expenses. Looking beyond that, there is a history of losses through Splash. In the 2024 budget, there was a $1.25 million loss in '23, a $1 million loss in '24, a $1.3 million loss on Splash operations. With that history, somehow with this new budget, this new budget protect, projects to make $75,000 for this upcoming fiscal year, which again is a lie because it doesn't include the $625,000 depreciation expense, which actually makes your projected loss $550,000. All of this is in, in an enterprise fund, which should be self-sufficient. So assuming that you don't make the change to the budget, which I please ask that you do, going with a positive cash flow number of $75,000 for this fiscal year, when none of the previous years have even come close to having anywhere near a positive cash flow, is absolutely ridiculous. Based on operating days, that $75,000 translates to about $1,000 a day. Y'all are making a thousand bucks on that massive water park a day. That's ridiculously low considering what could be. In February, I offered numerous suggestions as to how to increase profitability. None of my suggestions seem to have been implemented. As I said, I have a six-year-old, I go to Splash almost daily. And in your highlights, you claim that revenue estimates include increases to concessions revenues. Yesterday, literally yesterday, the only non-vendor concession that wasn't Chicken Salad Chick or the pizza place, the only non-vendor concession stand wasn't even open. Hard to make more money on concessions when the concession stand isn't open. Yet they had plenty of employees walking around, literally doing nothing. There were staff standing around doing nothing and walking in massive groups of three to eight people seemingly strolling the park. I witnessed eight people working on a minor spill with one scrub brush. One guy scrubbing the floor, seven guys standing around watching him. There was two to three staff fixing the lily pads with, once again, five guys looking on, not doing a thing. I have taken pictures for proof, I'm willing to show everybody. Staffing is probably one of the biggest expenses. So staff needs to be cut or less, less staff scheduled if there's no work for the staff to perform. Although there are numerous things I could point to for these unoccupied staff, that these unoccupied staff could otherwise be doing. Also, there are projections to increase the revenue by $1.3 million, which is a pie in the sky made up number. There's been no marketable change in the operations of Splash, yet magically you pull 1.3 million, 1.3 million in revenue out of thin air. Let's be reasonable and let's not lie to the taxpayers about the massive deficit that this park is causing us. Do I love Splash? No, it annoys the heck out of me to see how it is run on a daily basis, but my daughter does love it and loves to go there. So I will continue to tell you or the new county commissioners ways to improve profitability because it is something that I enjoy for my daughter, but I would like for it to be profitable for taxpayers. Otherwise, it needs to be sold. Finally, the question has been asked, where cuts can be made to the budget? It's hard to say when the full-time line item budget still isn't available. I know, if I may finish, I do know that last year during the taxpayer hearings, numerous people gave you all options, but you disregarded every single suggestion thrown out there last year. I guess elections thankfully do have consequences. Thank you.
David Jackson. David Jackson.
I was hoping my translator would be here for ASL, American Sign Language, called most of what everybody tells y'all or talks to y'all about or suggests to you that falls on deaf ears. So I'll probably try to speak a little louder tonight. Y'all got us on taxes last year, 30%. My wallet's thin. I'm 70 years old, I was hoping to retire by now. You can look and you know kind of squirt, squirt, whatever. But like this gentleman right here spoke here last year, when y'all were doing the budget, and y'all were talking about this school resource officers, correct? Having officers in the schools for kids. You said it was near to your, near to your heart, as you said that words. What about before school? What about the safety of the children standing on the side of the road, waiting on buses, and when the bus pulls up and puts their sign out, got their lights on, cars go, poof, flying right through there? That's a problem. It hasn't happened twice in the last three weeks before school let out in front of my house with my grandchildren. The only thing that was in their saber-favor, that my gun was in the house, because I'd probably shot the back window out. There's no sense in this. Y'all charge us out the butt for taxes, that services we don't get in southeast Bullock. Over on Eldora area, the roads suck, the traffic has increased ungodly. You got all this traffic coming in from Rincon or Effingham, coming up this way, going to that stupid plant out there. Y'all got your head in the clouds so high that you think we're going to make all this money off of this plant, and you ain't going to make nothing. The warehouses have now stopped building because they got nobody to buy them. It's ridiculous. Y'all, you know, use some common sense. I hope y'all have budget enough money to have officers to patrol the areas in the mornings when school buses are running, so that these kids don't have to worry about some fool coming down through there, not stopping for the bus or hitting the bus, or possibly slamming on brakes and losing control of the car and coming over and running over two kids or three kids or whatever standing out there on that bus stop. The next thing we got a problem with is my taxes went up last year. The reason I say, what we say is falling on deaf ears, because I've brought this to y'all before. For the last three months, with all this rain, we have gotten, my property has been under freaking water. I've had to rent a power pump to pump out some of it. I got water standing under my fricking house, I'm having to pay to have dirt brought in to redo my driveway from the washout, and y'all ain't done nothing. The closest thing we get to seeing anything, road maintenance as a whole, is a bunch of people coming out there with these little patch kits, patting a pothole on Eldora Road. So I hope you got some money in the budget to repair this stuff, because right now you have three options, and I will, I will be back in 30 days to find out what y'all are going to suggest that you do. Number one, you can come out there, and you can get your road department or whoever, and redirect the fricking water from my property. Or number two, we can come to a terms of a monetary settlement that you will pay me to keep all of that flowing through my property, across Martin Swenson, out to the river, wherever it goes, and also pay me to keep the darn trash that floats underneath Eldora Road that's all over in the front of my property. I spent two days out there the other day in wading boots and a nine millimeter on my hip, hoping to God there wasn't a snake or a gator up in there, which wouldn't bother me none because I'd have blown his brains out. Or number three, and the final option you have, if you don't do nothing about it, or we can't come to terms of agreement, I promise you I will, I will shut it off. I will, I will, then pipes won't be coming, water coming through my property again, water standing under my house, my walk, my driveway's getting washed out, me having to pay. For y'all to get to have free use of my property, not no more. I'm done with it. So y'all figure out what you're going to do, you're going to let me know in 30 days.
Lotman Sack.
Mr. Chairman, it feels like it's been a long year, a lot of discussions from over in the Honeybone Building and the agriculture building and back into this building. Y'all have heard from a lot of citizens over this past year, and you're probably hearing a lot more now these assessment notices are out there. But we're here tonight to really talk about the budget. Fortunately, we don't have a comprehensive budget to really go through and, and see exactly where this money's going. What we've been given is a summary budget, where everything is just kind of lumped together. I did a search for the word consultant when I was going through this, and I couldn't find it anywhere in this upcoming year's budget. This past year, it seems like we've spent a lot of money on paying outside people to come in and give advice to the county, to you, as to county manager, Mr. Couch, and to the staff here and to the county commissioners. But as I've been speaking with different people in the community, I met with Sean Davis yesterday from Assured Partners. He had great concerns of why the county's spending $250,000 on an insurance consultant when there are numerous agencies within the county that can give the suffice. Obviously, they're looking for business on the back end as well. But why $250,000 is leaving our funds and going to an out-of-state consultant when we have people here? We have a prestigious university here with many research departments. We have a great university in Atlanta, Georgia Tech, and they all provide services. But it seems like we've gotten addicted to spending $250,000 for each of these consultants. When Sheriff Brown spoke at the NAACP forum before the election, he made a statement for basically every $500,000 that he does not have in his budget. That represents 10 deputies that he would either have to cut or that he could add to his force. And I started thinking about all of these consultants, and that's why I searched for it. $250,000 could give him the five officers, and we know he comes up every single year asking for more and more officers to be given. But it seems like the county finds other avenues instead of giving it to public safety to spend it on consultants, sending $7.5 million over to Bryan County to the Hyundai plant, when these things could have been used to buy equipment and trucks and some of these other things. Now, over the last year, I've had it said to me, "Why are you against public safety?" And we keep coming back and says, "We're not." It says, "Take a look at what the commissioners are actually doing with our money and seeing how it's being redirected from public safety to, to other things." And these facts speak for themselves. I'm not making these numbers up. You can look at the spending that's been going on. These people, and I'm talking about the audience, keep telling me the one thing we care most about is public safety. And then second, they care about their roads. But they're saying, "We're paying all these taxes, but we're not getting anything for them." And they look up and they see Hyundai's getting our money, these out-of-town consultants are getting our money, but what are we getting for it? And those are realistic questions. Let's just be honest and fair. When somebody takes your money, you want to know where it's going. If you're married, your spouse wants to know what you've been doing with your paycheck. And when the citizen's money's being spent, they're going to ask these, these questions. And I, I think it's fair for them to have the answer, why our money keeps going to consultants instead of being spent on the things that the sheriff keeps asking for, that Brian Hendricks keeps asking for, for EMS, Ted Nguyen, Randy Tillman, these other people. And then we, you know, tell them we don't have the money to do it, and then we see that money's being spent. The other issue that I hope Mr. Couch will address is this TAD district, this tax allocation district. Most of the people out here have no idea, and if you could take a few moments, maybe at the end of the meeting, and kind of explain exactly what that is, how it brings in revenue through buying, sales, or however it's going to be, and just share that with the people. Thank you.
Bill Emlee.
Good evening, Commissioners, distinguished guests. I apologize, I didn't bring home, bring my notes in because I just saw the announcement in the paper tonight. The things that I would wish to address, and that is what was stated tonight, that our rainy day emergency fund is used for deficit spending. That seems to be like an oxymoron. Or is deficit spending an equation for the emergency fund to be support, the emergency fund to support deficit spending? Or would it be more proactive to look at what our deficit spending is going to and cut those projects or those expenses before we have to go into the emergency fund, which Mr. Connor just helped us understand, is for emergencies like tornadoes, hurricanes, disasters? But if we're going into the emergency fund to fund deficit spending, then how are we going to fund when the hurricane comes through, or the tornado, or the disaster? To me, that seems to be an oxymoron. When I opened up my tax bill and saw the drastic increase, again, I had to ask and look, how much did my retirement check go up? So I had money to go into my savings account and checking account. How much did my Navy retirement, I'm fortunate to have, go up last year's and the years ahead, so it can go into it? And I'm happy to report that the county taxes and county, county increasing the taxes has exceeded the advantages or the increases in my revenues. So what emergency fund do I have to go extract money out from? And it wasn't so long ago when our emergency fund was so low that we required a tax increase to build it back up. So again, what we're talking about, our people are talking about, we are not spending our money wisely. We are not being conservative. When I listen, when I read in the paper that I think our CFO had stated in the beginning when we had the budget meeting, that we had more resources requested than we do funds. Well, if we have more resources requested from our department heads than we do funding, that tells me we've got a problem. We've, or excuse me, we've got a challenge, not a problem. When I hear that the sheriff is requesting X number of deputies every single year, every single year, I also have to ask, well, if we're supplying SRO officers to the schools, school system is 180 days a year, so that means what's the deputy doing the other half of the year? So if the sheriff is asking for a certain amount of deputies, and we've got deputies over here at the schools are only going to be there a half a year, is then those deputies used for the remaining of the year for the sheriff, thereby he doesn't need, well, I'm just pulling this out of the air, say 31 deputies, because six of them are SROs, so then he's going to have three deputies left over because of half a year, half a man-year of effort. When I hear about having Splash in the Borough, and it is constantly, every single year, losing money, how long is it going to take for you to realize that this is a pig in a poke? Why are we, why are we taking our tax dollars and just throwing it away? It's not profitable. When I hear about the county employees are deserving, and not to say that they're not deserving of pay raises, but I'm sorry, when a county employee or anybody is getting money that it has to be taken out of my tax dollars to pay for their increases, that's not fair. It's not right. I understand they need money, and they deserve money, but so do we. If we're on fixed income, I can't go to the federal government. We can't go to the federal government. We can't go to the banking institutes and say, "Hey, we need more money. We got to pull it from the rainy day fund." But it seems to be that you all, the county commissioners, are spending money on projects that they don't have, and they're budgeting and hoping that they're going to get more money, and the way they get more money is by raising taxes. Thank you very much.
Robert Williams.
Robert, I think it's Williams. The last name is kind of hard to read.
I was assigning him.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
I'll address Mr. Sack's request concerning tax allocation districts. In 49 other states in, in the United States, they're referred to as tax increment financing districts. Approximately 12 years ago, a redevelopment plan was put together for an 1,800-acre area around I-16 and 301, where ultimately, through seed funding created through state and federal grants, the industrial park was developed, and some of the infrastructure was put in with those grant funds. So ultimately, the phase one of the infrastructure was pretty much paid for with grants. But the way mathematically that TADs work is that you have a base year, which I think was 2012 in this case, for that 1,800-acre area. And mathematically, you freeze the assessment for that particular year, and each year thereafter, that property values go up through redevelopment, or not redevelopment, new development or other means, it then is ran through a calculation collectively by the Finance Office and the tax assessors, with some participation with the tax commissioner who has to collect it. But the reason they call it tax increment financing is the growth that comes from new developments is calculated every year and then put back into a special fund. And what, what happened is for many years, despite all of the grant funding that we got, we were able to build, buy the land, build the infrastructure, improve the property, and, and so forth, because it was a public industrial park. The, the fact that we were getting off the Great Recession, no development was coming in, no significant industrial prospects occurred to about 2016 or 17, or with Hyundai or with the truck stop, there was really no tax increments that were coming into the fund. In fact, there was a period of time after the Great Recession where the valuations on properties, not just properties at the 16301 area, you know, a lot of our home valuations went down because real, the real estate market was in a negative condition. But as I said, in about 1617, things buoyed, and ultimately what happened, there was maybe a dribble of funding that we could get on the reevaluations, but there was no significant redevelopment until first of all, the truck stop came in. Now, we, we have projected, we, we, we think that a Parker's Kitchen is going to be coming in there fairly soon. We think as a result of the new factories that are going to be coming online, there's probably going to be need for restaurants and other kinds of service businesses. So we think over the next five to seven years, that those tax increments will begin to build. And actually, the district will expire in 2037, or we could put it back, or we could pull it back, or we could make the tax district expire earlier. But all of that money that, that's accumulated is set aside for infrastructure. And I could get really in the weeds about project-specific TADs and, you know, just the regular tax base, but ultimately, you freeze the assessment in 2012, money is supposed to accumulate for new development, and then any infrastructure, whether it's roads, water, and sewer, and so forth, if that's needed, you can, you can pay for that out of the tax pull it back, or we could make the tax district expire earlier. But all of that money that's accumulated is set aside for infrastructure. And I could get really in the weeds about project-specific TADS and, you know, just the regular tax base. But ultimately, you freeze the assessment in 2012, money is supposed to accumulate for new development, and then any infrastructure, whether it's roads, water, and sewer and so forth, if that's needed, you can pay for that out of the tax fund. You could build fire stations, you could build a park if you wanted to. Our redevelopment plan didn't call for that, it was basic infrastructure, you know, roads, wet utilities, stormwater if it was needed. So as of right now, out of that 1,800 acres, I think only 300 of it has really been substantially approved. So in the best worst-case scenario, if money accumulates and there's no infrastructure projects in the future, the commissioners have an opportunity to let the TAD expire and just bring that money back into the regular fund, or general fund. But I think, what did we have for the budget on the TAD this year? Not much, or it wouldn't buy a lot.
Hold on, I don't remember.
Is it like 140, 140,000?
115.
Okay. And there's a likelihood that if nothing else changes, that 115 will accumulate at about the same rate for a few years, or if new development comes in, there could be kind of a windfall. When you look at the Statesboro TAD for South Main, I mean, it really hasn't generated that much. They haven't done a TAD specific, well, maybe they have done a couple of TAD-specific projects like the West District and things like that. They haven't spent a lot of money, nor have they accumulated a lot of money, because the amount of development really hasn't come to fruition. But, you know, all you're really doing is manipulating the tax base where you can do a holdback on the growth and development and assessments, and you can use that money to pay for infrastructure that's needed. It's really a way for new development to pay for its own infrastructure.
How do you do that when the taxes are abated for the factors?
That was a consideration in the redevelopment plan, but all I can say is the Development Authority chose to be more aggressive with the abatements. I think when we had, I'd have to go back and look to be 100% accurate, but I think the estimates we had at that time for the scenarios that we had, we only anticipated what I would call, we discounted the abatements to about a 50% level. Well, you know, 0% at 10 years, that doesn't increase the TAD, but the only good thing about the new factories coming on is they do pay school taxes and they do pay fire taxes.
And let me say this, the Development Authority properties are not included in the calculating the tax base, increment base, because they're tax-exempt properties, so that's, they're not really considered in it.
Does that money have to be spent within the TAD?
Yes. And, you know, there was a time when we talked to the Board of Education about participating in the TAD. When you look at the two TADS in Statesboro, I think the South Main TAD, the Board of Education does not participate, but I think they participate in the public TAD. You know, I did have some talks with the superintendent a few years ago and did a business case analysis for their participation, which would have at the time generated about the same amount of money we had. But school districts can participate, and that's another way to leverage. If the City of Statesboro, for example, in their TADS, they can get the county and the school board to participate, but it's up to the school board if they want to be a participating entity.
Yeah. And one of the main reasons for doing this, as Tom alluded to, most places are called tax increment financing, is to do TAD bonds, so that revenue that is pledged toward the payment of the bonds. And we haven't had any bonds, and Statesboro did, and the Publix TAD. But I also think they got a pledge from the property owners in the TAD to pay, you know, in case the TAD revenue was not enough, because obviously if it doesn't develop or doesn't increase, then you're going to have to find somewhere else to pay for it. That's one of the main reasons you do it.
If you're done with that one, I want to address Splash just a little bit. Actually, I was the one that made the decision to take the depreciation line out of the budget, and the reason being, depreciation is a non-cash expenditure, or expense. So it is a business operating expense, but it does not take cash. Splash also has a debt payment, which the principal payment on that debt is a cash expenditure, but it is not a business expense, it is a reduction of a liability. So if you include both of those, that's not, they're opposite of each other. So you're overstating cash expenditures and business expenses. That was why I chose to only include one of them. In enterprise funds, I have read that it is generally best to either budget for capital replacements or budget depreciation, because they amount to the same general thing. So that debt payment is the payment of purchasing the wave pool and other improvements. So that was a decision I made, they probably did not know I made that decision, so I just wanted to clear the air. I was not trying to be misleading, I just felt that because the principal payment and depreciation are opposite, in that one is cash and not an expense, and the other is an expense but not cash, that they kind of cancel each other out, although I know the amounts are different. So that was one thing. I can't speak on the operations of the park itself, but there is, Splash is an enterprise fund, it should support itself. The water park that is open during the summer supports itself and makes a large profit. There is also a community pool out there that operates as a community pool 12 months out of the year. It does not support itself all winter. So that is, that is a lot of the problem, is that in the past, it was able to, the summer operations were able to support the pool year-round. That has not been the case.
Who made the decision to increase the cost for non-county people?
We all did as a group. I'll answer that one. We all did as a group because we were trying our best to make sure that we're not losing money on the park. And to my understanding, are you going to let me finish? So to my understanding, the prices have not been adjusted in a while, and concessions in particular haven't been adjusted since the park opened. So we all sat down as a group for about two hours trying to figure out how we were going to address the concerns that you're bringing about today. And we'd be more than happy to sit with you and talk to you about it, anytime you want to.
Okay.
Can I address something?
Yep, absolutely.
Tony Morgan with the Recreation Department. While I'm not totally involved, I am helping oversee in the absence of a director right this minute. One thing we all need to remember too is weather is one of our biggest issues for Splash in the borough. As we start seeing 40 and 50% chances of rain, our attendance starts dropping drastically. If we have to close early, that affects things as well. Also with our budget, we look at, we have to remember, we're looking at weather patterns that are also from June of 2022 to June 30th of 2023. So if we have a lot of rain from July to Labor Day, and we can't be open as much, and then we open up the next season and we have a lot of rain from May to June 30th, that limits us on the number of days that we can be open. So that has an effect too. I don't know how to correct that. There is no way for us to do that. As far as the concessions that was brought up for yesterday, or today, it is closed. The ventilation system went down for the concessions. We have the parts ordered, we're actually driving to Athens tomorrow to pick them up, so we can have it installed tomorrow night, and it'll be in full operation Saturday. Not, we'd have to wait for it to show up on Monday and get it on Tuesday. We're trying to do what we can to make sure we can keep those revenues coming. As far as the employees, I can't speak completely on that, and the only thing I can say is, we don't know how many people is coming to the park whenever we open up in the mornings. We have to be prepared for full capacity at all times. So I can help address some of the issues, but we have to have staff on hand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address some of Mr. Sack's concerns about consultants.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sack, I think your concerns are well-intended, but you introduced several distortions. You know, assuming that you spoke with Mr. Davis at Assured Partners, I don't know whether or not that he told you that he was involved in a competitive bid, the $250,000 that you're referring to is with Mark III, and yes, they are out of town. And we did do competitive bidding, and unfortunately, Assured Partners and some other bidders were substantially higher. We had no issue with their proposed quality of service. We did take into consideration their location here at home, but when you're not there to see all the competitive proposals and try to evaluate them, you can't really make a judgment or accept somebody's word of mouth. But we think we've been getting the value from Mark III that we've wanted, and I'm sure in the next couple of years it would be appropriate to put out an RFP again, just to keep the market honest. And I think that's a lot of, one other sidebar thing that people feel to realize, is we put out a lot of competitive bids, we have purchasing requirements, we just don't go out and say like Jim Cramer, buy, buy, buy. You know, we do have policies and procedures where we're purchasing standards adhered to countywide. But going back to the consultants, there are circumstances, and I can appreciate if you disagree whether a consultant is needed or not, but when you're operating a business or the business of government, there are circumstances that dictate the use of consultants. And some of the consultants that you may have concern about really don't diminish the ability of public safety units to get additional personnel, especially in the last two or three years. We have strictly adhered to a request by a sheriff to have a five-year staffing plan, and I think this will be year four. And Sheriff, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have not failed to provide the personnel according to that staffing plan. And in addition to that, we've tried to get better coverage in the schools with SROs, and when they're not working those 180 days or half of the year at the schools, you know, they're not sitting or driving around eating peanuts all day, they're providing patrols, and it supplements the sheriff's road patrols, I think, or other duties that are required by the sheriff's office. The main reason that you get any kind of consulting, for whatever kind of price it is, it's for speed and expertise that you may not have on your general management staff. Or even if that general management staff has the speed and expertise, for example, the internal workforce study that we're doing, yeah, it's about a quarter of a million dollars. Could our HR director do it? Maybe some or most of it. I'm not sure she could make certain kinds of projections, and that's not diminishing her skills, it's just a fact. But the biggest thing is, it would take away from her general management duties as well. She's got a vast responsibility for hundreds of employees and a lot of compliance with state and federal laws that relate to labor, and she does that very, very well. And if we push her off to do a study for a year that maybe she's capable of doing, she can't give proper instruction to the rest of that office to function properly, and we'd have employee lawsuits up the wazoo because we weren't doing things right. Or we'd be sued by somebody else, the Department of Labor, for not, you know, making proper reports, the IRS, and so forth. So it's a much, yes, you can state an opinion that you don't agree with the use of a certain consultant, or any consultants, that's your First Amendment right. However, you know, the fiduciary responsibility for general business operations is with the Board of Commissioners, and they chose to execute these kinds of studies and use of consultants that not, a lot of them are beneficial countywide, and then others are specific to public safety. A master facilities plan, you know, we're not just talking about parks, we're looking at fire stations, EMS stations. I know one consultant in particular, we're trying to plan the future for a new jail pod, you know, other public safety needs out at the camp, you know. So I think it's folly and a distortion. It's one thing to disagree whether the spending is required, but I think everybody at an operating level, and I think the Board of Commissioners and even elected officials are persuaded, that a couple of these studies in particular, we were trying to get some help to tell us how to adjust our business plans for the future, and what future facilities that we're going to need as a result of the growth. Something we never done, probably something we should have done 10 years ago, but that's just a fact. Disagree if you wish, I respect that, but I think I had to clear up distortions.
I just have one point of clarity as well, just for public record here. We actually pay our insurance consultant $60,000, not $250,000, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because that was misinformation. Thank you.
I think you have before. I guess, just trying to figure out what to do with it. You know, I want to read something to you. And listen to me carefully. I can't stand this thing, because you can't see me, so I'm going to stand up so you can see me. I want to read, this is an assessment that I've got for a gentleman, that's a business owner that's been in business for 72 years.
Roy, I can see you, but I can't hear you, and I'd rather hear you than see you.
How about now? It's on.
You're not close enough.
How about now? All right, this is from a business owner of 72 years in Bullock County. I want you to listen to these tax assessments and see if anybody has been mistreated any more so than this gentleman. I'm going to share, I know this guy pretty well, I'm going to share four with you. There's a place on North Side Drive, this fair market value last year was $230,800. I'm going to talk slowly so you can write all this down, so you can use it. His assessment for this year is $410,400. It's pretty sizable. Y'all understand, I know this guy real well. 1123 North Side Drive East. Last year was $319,400. Am I talking slow enough? This year is $448,100. Old River Road. Last year, $66,900. This year, $102,200. Another one, 204 acres, Old River Road. Last year, $275,110. You know, we're not sitting up here trying to make you pay more taxes and us not having to pay more taxes. I thank God just a few minutes ago for one thing. I don't have to put up with this anymore in six months. Some others here don't have to put up with it. Some others here don't have to put up with it. Now, you know what, if we wanted to do something very, very vindictive to the new folks coming in, we could roll the middleage rate back to seven. We're proposing 11444. Why? So that they would be protected and not have to have a tax increase next year. If we rolled it back to seven, eight, nine, there'd probably be a tax increase next year. We don't want that to happen to them either. So we're trying, we're trying to plan to do that. Anyway, that's what I wanted to share with you. These folks up here have to pay taxes also. Being respectful, you know, asking questions that you might have should have gone to someone else first and ask, it's like with the SR, it's like with the deputies. All those deputies that are in these schools, it's like Tom said, sheriff is sitting out there, he would verify it. They work year round. They go work to the school, then they patrol or whatever. That's all, any, let's see. I think we've said enough about taxes. I think this is in my court now. Hopefully all of y'all have gotten your answers. If not, please come to the county up here and ask anybody in the department that handles a particular question that you've got. They will answer your questions to the best of their ability, just like the finance team that we've put together. They get an award every year, every year, for being the best around. You know, and it sort of hurts when people, you need to appreciate who we have here. They've done the very best job that they can. I'm going to ask now for a motion to close. Public comment section.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, we have a second. This section is closed.
My name was on the list, and I did not speak. I do not like to speak, but may I have two minutes?
You come on up. Now, this is something I've done all year, but only you, no one else.
Well, you kind of respect my age, I guess. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
My name is Robert Wiggins, and I know most of you, most of your friends and neighbors. But I get a feeling every day, and I think about this a lot, I watch news, I watch court, and I feel like our country's kind of losing it. I kind of feel like we're losing it, and somewhere along the way, I think we've gotten behind and not done something right. With the thing, you know, with the new car plant, I think we jumped into something and we got two tigers by the tail instead of one. And you guys are a lot smarter than I am, but I think that from the get-go, we didn't know what we were getting into. And as of today, I really don't think we know what we've gotten into. Now, the tax increases, I know we've got to have tax increases, but what is really causing the tax increases to be excessive? Is it that end of the county? Is it that end of the county? Is it because we're having what we've got to do down there? My thinking is, we're taking it all on Bullock County. We're paying the taxes, but is the state going to benefit from this? Is Bryan County going to benefit from this? You know, I would like to, I know you guys, they've gone, you've gone over this back and forward, but is there any way we can back up and ask the state to maybe contribute a third of this? Can we get Bryan County? Because we're going to be schooling their children. The tax is not going up because of our children, it's going to go up because of the new people coming in. I was talking with a guy this week, first time I ever met him. He works down there, makes $50 an hour. He's from Alabama. And he said, Robert, he said, what we're getting in down there is not Effingham, Bryan, and Bullock County employees. He said, the employees is coming from out there somewhere. So now, we're building schools for those children that's coming from out there somewhere. We're not building schools for our children, but I just wonder if we can back up and ask for help for somewhere else other than putting a 10% on us year after year. We've got to slow it down somewhere.
I'm going to make a suggestion, because I've allowed something that I haven't done all well in eight years, I guess, almost eight years. Come see me.
All right. We've got an appointment.
Because your two minutes is just about up.
Can I, can I address Mr. Wiggins? And really, it's addressing everybody too, but quickly, or not at all?
No, we're going, this is the second time I've done this. Now, I'm not going to do it anymore. This is it. Put three minutes on the clock.
Well, you haven't done it to me in a long time. But Mr. Wiggins, man others, I promise you, we, we had, the day Hyundai announced, maybe a little bit before, when, when we were told of the magnitude of what was coming, we were stunned. You know, you might remember about 10 years ago, there was talk of Volvo coming there, but that didn't materialize. That would have been a walk in the park, because they were only going to employ 1,500 employees. Bryan, because of the groundwater issues, Bryan County had to get water up here then too. But the whole thing evaporated when they announced they were going to South Carolina, Volvo. But when they said 8,500 employees, when they said, as big as that facility that you see now, when you drive that way, that's the biggest horizontal construction project I've ever seen. When you talk about the other 9,000 employees that are going to be direct and indirect, or no, direct suppliers, you know, we got three of them, right? And a couple others. The only thing I can tell you, and the only thing that I've been trying to tell people, and they just don't get it because they haven't lived through it. But 20 years ago, when I came here from Henry County, it was the third fastest growing county in the country. We were running 3,500 single-family permits just in the unincorporated area, where we're doing about 500 or 600 now, and it might juke up a little in the next couple of years. And no, this isn't easy, but compared to that, it was, it's a cakewalk. And we did everything we knew how to do professionally, sometimes part of the reasons for consultants because we never faced this stuff before. But we have tried, in fact, we are, were highly regarded in the state. We are so far ahead of the other three counties in planning, but we've never got the chance to tell the story because there's so much noise and demagoguery and innuendo. So, you know, maybe this is the mea culpa, I don't know. But the bottom line is, these seven guys haven't been sitting on their hands. They've been doing everything they know how to do with a hurricane barreling down on them. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to start over.
I got one thing too, can I talk?
Go ahead.
Mine will be way shorter than Tom's.
And we got commissioner comments in a few minutes.
Okay.
I'm going to start over. I now call for a motion to close. Florida public comments. We have a motion, we have a second and a discussion. All of those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Now, for staff comments, any staff members? Commissioner comments?
My turn?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. David Jackson, if you will, get with me right after the meeting, if you'll just hold up just a minute. I'll come down, I'll come down, maybe Sunday afternoon if you ain't gone, or maybe Saturday evening if I can get off a little early.
I'll be back Sunday afternoon. We've got a race up in, uh...
But we can do it Sunday after church, too.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Let me get your phone number for you, don't get ghost on me. Come find me after the meeting, I'll see if I can run down there.
All right.
Any other commissioners? And I do want to say this, I do apologize if I have offended anyone tonight, but it's tough. So having said that, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, second, discussion. All of those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. This meeting is now adjourned.